Alrighty, let's call this meeting in order. Please rise to the flag.
Aye.
Close allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three, any citizens daring to be heard. Hearing nine, number four, open seal bid, 2017 CDVG 1668-5, CDVG 16, in consideration of possible action of the warning said.
We proceed bids from TJ Campbell, Atlas Paving, and Haskel Women.
Mellie, how is the CDVG world?
Well, right now, it's out of the fiscal year 18 budget. We don't have a 17 amount yet.
You want to look at these?
Yes.
Almost got away from you, but. 211-888.
Just letting me call these out, just I look at them.
Please.
This bid is from Haskel Women Construction of the Homer City. They do have all of the required affidavits. And they have acknowledged the addendum.
How many miles?
They do have their bid bond.
How far is going on this project, right? How far am I going? Ah, Noble would be on the Coltrane over just past Cedar Lane. And the Wildwood would be from Coltrane over to Old Country. What's that called, Old Country? Drive or something, I forgot.
Their bid is in the amount of $237,048.35. And this bid is from TJ Campbell Construction. They do have all the required affidavits, they have acknowledged the addendum, and they have a bid bond. Their price, $211,888.50. 211-888.50.
Just so y'all know, Mellie, she's our CDVG grant writer, so she puts it all in the paper. It's a complicated grant.
I'm sure it is. That's hard to figure out.
She does a really good job for it.
She does.
Federal, use of federal money requires a whole different level of bidding and bonding and paperwork than we are with county funds.
At least ten trees require to be murdered in order to have lots of money. Lots of paperwork.
Okay, final bid is from Atlas Paving. They do have the addenda acknowledged, all the required affidavits, and the bid bond. Their price is $143,898.
Lot of money on David's bear.
And.
Lot cheaper than 211 or 212.
Yeah, that does put you in the budget.
Certainly does.
In the funds. So, our originally planned budget was $169,900 for construction. So, here's what we have to do. I'll get copies of these. We do have to check the debared list, make sure they don't have any federal debt or any debarment issues out there. And then come back and award next week with that.
They don't meet again until the 14th. So, I mean, if you want, they can go ahead and, because it's on the agenda to consider to award. They could award.
Subject two.
Subject two, and then that way we can actually maybe prepare to have the contract on for the 14th. Does that work for you?
Okay, I'll make that motion, Dan, that we take Atlas asphalt with 143 and change. Presuming that everything goes through like nobody says. It was Atlas, I guess. Alright, I got a motion. And a second. And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mellie, for your long work on that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Those people will be thrilled.
Alrighty, number five, meeting with county officers regarding estimate needs. Sheriff's is denied.
Commissioners, can you pack up copies of each? And they're in the order that they were heard by the excise board, and I didn't change the order of them. They should all match up.
Laura, this attorney.
There's nothing different than last year. That $36,000 is really a number of this year, and that's our money, you front and we reimburse. And so we only use $60,404 from that. And the civil attorney is Lowell, and that's always used. That's around $5.64 a month, I believe. And I still wake up every day and thank God for Lowell, because you've always heard that no one's indispensable. Lowell is not, I cannot function without Lowell. I don't know anyone that would have his mindset of public service at a detriment to himself. So, I really appreciate Lowell for years now. And the other $6,000 is our M&amp;O account, the law library account, I'm sorry, the law library account. We only use $2694 of that this year. That one's hard, because last year we switched from Westlaw to Nexus. And so Lexus gives us this really good deal, starting out, and then it slowly increases. However, I don't see a spending $6,000, plus we've gone less and less towards hard books and totally online.
Lexus Nexus is online.
Yes. Well, that's the way we choose to use it. And that's all I have.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could interject something I found out, I'm on the excise board. And our total expected request that you'll be hearing today is a little over 6 million. And our expected funds are about 4.6 million. So, there's substantial difference there that's going to have to be made up. And I wish I'd heard that before I heard all the presentations. So, I hope that helps you in hearing these presentations.
Okay, if I may?
Yeah.
Just since Dan's thrown that out there, the other request for 6 million. That 4.6 was a very ultra-conservative number, based on numbers that weren't even in yet. Dan, to be honest with you, I think we're going to come in at about 5.5, from what I'm looking at this weekend.
That'd be great.
Our budget last year was 5.3. These totals are on the temporary forms that are later on the agenda, but don't go into complete panic.
Yeah.
So, that's kind of where we are.
But there is a shortfall there.
We're going to have to cut from requests.
Yeah. So, that helps me in hearing the request, realizing that you're not going to be able to meet all these requests.
Kind of a silly one for y'all. So, it says $36,000, y'all do when he's talking about the shortfall. Does it include this $36,000 fictitious?
It's included in the 6 million total request figure, but we know that the state sets that, and we have to fund it, so we're not going to be cutting it, because the state sets that for the reimbursement rate.
That's the way it works, is our board requests appropriations, and the excise board approves those appropriations. So, we won't request any appropriations that's outside of what we can estimate our monies are going to be for the year. But we're not at that point yet, we're just looking at it. But yours is all, most all reimbursement mistakes, that's the problem.
Alrighty, Laura, thank you.
I'm going to leave to go sign her paperwork.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, election board.
The difference in my budget this time is we're trying to bring our third person on full-time and not be part-time. It's really hard to have a two-person office, so we dropped our part-time and then increased so that we've got that third person. And then also, I always put extra money in there in case you guys want to have an election on your own, which I don't think you want to have next year, so we'll probably end up giving that money back. So, that's about $10,000.
10?
Yeah, it's about 10.
Alrighty, any questions on board? Thank you. Alright, county chair, denied.
Well, I won't waste your time. Yeah, we're asking for the same amount of money that we requested last year, which, you know, the initial budget that was requested last year, you guys, or we gave back $180,000 of that to assist with the insurance for the county. Me being the new guy, of course, I'm asking for it again, I'd like to increase staff and give some raises.
So, Dan, the first one we're looking at here is one for the sheriff's office, right?
Yes, sir.
That's the million, $52,505, right? That's one you talked about, same as last year, with.
Overall, the total amount we asked for is the same amount.
Total from front and back.
But you did turn back money, I mean, so whatever you don't spend out of the general fund, you turn back it a year anyway. Alright, thanks, that's all the question I had.
Anything, Mike? You want to do? Thank you, Damon.
One more time.
County chair. Oh, it's jail. Last year, I think they asked for, what, $250?
They asked for $250, then received 70.
This year, you're asking for 100? Any questions?
Not this time.
Alright, Damon, thanks. Court clerk?
I've asked for a little bit more to try to give my two lowest-paid employees a small raise. Otherwise, nothing's changed, it's to the all employees.
Alright, girl, thank you. Any questions? Civil defense.
I put in a small raise on there, and then our siren maintenance, we have six county storm sirens that we're responsible for. I upped that from five to eight. We spent just about all of that five last year just on the maintenance of maintaining, keeping those operational, so that's it. If we have to cut that back, we'll figure something out, but that's my two deals. Otherwise, everything else is the same.
Any questions for David?
Just on the maintenance, David, you spent $5,000 this last year on maintenance. Do you assume that same number's going to be the next month?
Probably so, yes. And it may actually increase a little bit, just because of everything goes up, the price of different batteries and different things.
I mean, is that what it costs to have them serviced, or is that for breakdowns?
Some of that was for, let me see, there was one or two lightning strikes that Andy had to go in and replace the board, circuit board on there. And then we did some batteries on a few of them, replaced. They're not on electricity, they're on solar panel batteries, and there's like, it's either six or eight big deep-cycle batteries to replace those. And then he had a, there was a circuit issue with the one at Sooner. I'm not technical on the exact terms, but he had to go in with some of the electrical, an electric module box, I believe is what it was. Had to go in and replace that. When you, unfortunately, because they're up in the air, when you're dealing with having him have to bring in a big bucket truck, and it just gets expensive to maintain what we have.
Good thinking.
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, OSU, the stamps in.
Yes, sir. Ours, the primary reason for the increase is OSU sets our budget, and basically, our entire budget is considered contractual services from the county. And basically, what it reflects is they're wanting all the counties to pick up a little bit more of the cost of doing business, essentially. I mean, it's just a reflection of what they've done statewide. We're still considered OSU employees, but they're hoping that the counties will pick up more of the budget. It's just a reflection of their, reflection of their cutbacks, but in terms of, you know, from my opinion, and this is my first go-around, but it looks to me like travel is the main place, just in terms of to try to be as willing to negotiate and as cooperative as possible. It looks to me like that number is inflated, in my opinion. You know, it's the number they gave us, but I would be surprised. That's why I broke it down there at the bottom for you. How that's broken out, I just don't think we'll ever use quite that much. So, if there's a place to whittle, that's my suggestion, and certainly, I'd be willing to try to tell them that that's what we agreed to do, just because I think that's a pretty inflated number personally.
We're really not here to whittle today, just.
Right, I just thought I'd throw that out there to you, just because I figured, for the sake of getting along for everybody, you're going to have to whittle sometime on something, but.
As cheap as that tuition is, I'm very thoughtful. You know, with trying to start picking up a lot of money.
Unfortunately, none of the tuition dollars come to us.
Cheapest tuition is where.
She's trying to make a joke.
Trying. Anyone here with Free Fair? Thank you, Alan.
You bet. Looks like there isn't a sign.
Yeah. Any questions on Free Fair, anybody? Wanted I can answer them. They stay the same. County assessor.
On the budget, I think the assessor's been very frugal over the past year, because we're returning $1,500 back to the account. And for the, for this year, we're actually asking for $3,600 more than last year, and most of that would go into personal services. Just to give some raises to people we'd like to be sure we keep and not let them go and have to replace them, because that is costly. So, that's on the $1,600 account, which is the county side. Then on the $1,700 account, which is the school side, it is, it is the same amount that we're asking for, so there's no increase there.
That's on rebound?
Yes. Yeah, on that, on that one, we have shuffled some of the expenses around to, you know, keep it where that a little bit more goes into some areas and takes some out of others, but overall, it's the same. Want to be the same request.
Alrighty. Any questions on board? Candy treasurer.
Not much difference. I'm asking for more than I received last year at M&amp;O, but requesting less than I requested last year at M&amp;O. Only because my treasury cash account has broken down to zero, because I've used it so much. I only paid one employee out of this account, so I put in a small raise for her, and then I pay all my other expenses and employees out of a different account, out of my cash account. So, there's not much change.
So, you pay the rest of the memory cash via account. Appreciate that, thanks. Any questions for the chair?
If I did my numbers right, I added your appropriations to total for last year and this year, and it's, looks like it's just a write-up. Little under $4,000 dollar increase, and that's not that bad.
Yeah, it's from the M&amp;O.
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
Next is the little county commissioners.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Your turn instead, it's going. We basically just asked for a little increase for our secretary and office. About the same.
We did have to up our travel expenses.
Yeah, the travel expenses changed, because Mike is debating whether to take his travel, and Marvin, we're going to, well, no, that's in the legacy accounts. Any questions on that one? Next is general government. It's going to change.
So, yes?
I said it's going to change. When we get down to the kids. Any questions on?
So, for the folks in the audience, I guess, the net appropriations last year was $823,905. And this year, we're estimated, which is going to change, I should say, because we're going to have to cut some. $874,010.
Our charity account, it stays the same, $17.50.
Lot of comments.
The county audit is set by statutes. It's at $95,000. Insurance. Y'all can chime in on insurance. You want to go with number by number, Troy, or?
Well, we can, FICA, the county match, social security, Medicare, there's an almost $6,000 increase there. Retirement, a $30,000 increase. Unemployment, a $3,000 increase. Workman's comp, a $6,000 increase, and about an $18,000 increase on the medical insurance. Bear in mind that I have not yet received what the premiums on health insurance are going to do, so we have no idea how this is all going to relate out until we get a little further into the process.
But we believe it's going to be around a million dollars for health insurance this year.
Probably.
Should know that soon.
I'm hoping. To be honest, the county last year, with the health insurance, we set the level at $600 per month. We were unable to 100% provide the full package cost-wise. I'm not foreseeing and looking at numbers all this last few days that we're going to be able to exceed that $600 per month.
Well, workman's comp, though, we know it's going to be $195,000.
Yes, we, that we're guaranteed on the work comp, that is the actual cost.
So, workman's comp, just so y'all know, is $195,863. Unemployment's $40,000. Retirement's $400,000.
And the thing to bear in mind is, any increase to salary increases the need on these accounts, because they're based on the cost, the gross wage.
So, if raises are given, then that goes up as well.
Exactly.
Highway budget? We're asking for 300, 300,000. I mean, 100,000 for each district, then we're going to put 7,200 in that account for Marvin's travel, that he's going to roll back into his M&amp;O account.
The 7,200 has to be funded to that account, the 300,000 is.
The 300,000 is a wish.
Just 7,200 is a, the wish list is a benefit that I get, that I give them back to the county, and that's why it sort of has to be funded back into there. The other 300,000, as Mike pointed out, is something that we threw on there just in case the sky opened up and started raining $100 bills, which doesn't look like that's going to happen, so. Thank you, Chair.
Alrighty. That's the big increase. Candy clerk?
Yeah, huge increase. An increase of a little less than $2,000. I've had some turnovers, empty seats, that's left salary money to roll over that I'm asking back, which will also allow me to give a little raise to staff. I lowered, anticipating the budget issues, I lowered my request for maintenance and operations. So, ultimately, from last year, it was 301,000, I'm asking for 303,000. I'll also point out that that 303,000 is pretty much what my office brought into general fund and filing fees for this last year.
So, Troy, last year, you, we were appropriated $301,000 to the office. How much of that did you turn back to the general fund?
$47,680.
Okay, that's, alright, thank you. Good job. And thank you.
Alrighty, any comment you have on that, estimate it needs?
I, I will, I just realized, um, the excise board request is not in your staff. They requested a total of twelve hundred dollars, I think, with from, down from four thousand. I completely forgot to make their, their copy.
We take that personally. Sorry.
That's it.
Alrighty, thank you all. There's no action to be done on that, so, number six?
Actually be down to number eight. Six and seven were an accident.
Are you sure? You don't wanna have Jerry to follow?
Sure, please, please go to number eight.
We can talk about it.
Alright, we're going to skip down to number eight, consideration of possible action on financial statement for resale. That's gonna be donated to my M and O account.
You said mine, you meant mine, right?
Yeah, D three.
Or going to the donate fund. I'll donate.
I have a motion.
Yeah, motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries, number nine, consideration of possible action on premium resolution approving monetary compensation for overtime hours in the election board. You trying to pay some down?
No, what we do is, if an entity, we hold an election for another entity, and we charge that entity any overtime hours that we work and then the employees get that overtime. So, it doesn't cost the county, the entity is.
It does, it matters to the general fund. So, it doesn't get charged to the general?
No, it does not.
Okay, great.
It pays up front, then we reimburse it, so.
We have a motion?
Martin made a motion.
Martin moved.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Number ten, consideration of possible action on resolution established in the local county investment policy for sixteen, seventeen, surely that's tight?
Yeah, it is.
So, it's seventeen eighteen?
Yes.
Three cut base. That's a cut.
Take it out of the overtime I earned yesterday.
Got it. What's our investment policy? Our policy is? Oh, that's two hundred. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number eleven, consideration of possible action on resolution designating depository banks for seventeen eighteen. I'll make the motion. There it be on.
Tall bank, six and a three.
Wayne, what are they doing over here?
I haven't, I wanna get that.
You guys need to get some bigger rat traps. If you're safe, what's up in the wall? Second.
You might be a little askin' in a minute.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Twelve, consideration of possible action on resolution, positive investment fees into the shares, fee cash account.
It's juvenile fees. Anything for the kids.
Yeah, I'm gonna go on the line here.
But it's for the children.
Yeah.
Sweet little kids.
Thirteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirteen, consideration of possible action on proven application for temporary appropriations for the general fund and the health department.
Okay, so, that we have money to operate while the budget process goes on, we, um, set fifty percent of what was received to each account last year in general fund as a temporary budget, except there are noted differences. Workman's comp was set at a hundred percent, so we could say, pay the bill in full and save five grand. M and O, general government was increased so that we could pay the property and liability insurance in full and save five thousand, um, so there's, there's a couple of slight differences. I've set the forms up, this is what the actual budget for each account was for last year. This is what they requested that you just heard a moment ago, and this is the amount that will be deposited as temporary appropriations.
So, it's half of what they got last year?
Except for some exceptions, yes.
Yeah, except the ones you, yeah, you talked about. That's not half of what they asked for this year?
No, no, no. And then on the health department, it's set up the same way, on the ours.
I'll move, approve the temporary appropriations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries. Fourteen, consideration of possible action on proven resolution to receive transfer property from Oklahoma County to District Two for payment of five thousand dollars. Make the motion on that, that's a bow bag, sheath foot, works, another one exactly like it, boaters, uh, frozen, so we'll be using it for parts. Can't get parts for these for easy. Alrighty, I have a motion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Actually, I would think as chairman, for, for my decision.
I believe this is a lease on our bobtail truck.
Yeah, you have your two O'Donnel leases or a risk resolution.
Alright, fifteen, consideration of possible action on proven resolution, section of lease with O'Donnell for seventeen eighteen for District One.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Sixteen, consideration of possible action on proven seventeen eighteen juvenile detention commentary.
This is the juvenile detention in Garfield County. I'll also.
We need to sign his insurance verification for me.
Oh, I didn't even see it, but, yeah.
I just now did.
I'm glad you did. Also, just as a point and note, now that I'm looking at all the numbers, uh, previous fiscal year, when we had instituted collecting reimbursement for the housing costs for juvenile detention, we had collected about eleven hundred dollars. In this fiscal year, we collected about twenty-five hundred. It's a small dent in about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of cost, but it helps.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Seventeen, consideration.
None on seventeen, I have one on eighteen.
Eighteen, consideration of possible action on resolution funding receiving officer for various accounts.
Court clerk's office.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Number ten, consideration of possible action improving the following temporary rip across imperments for select energy. Boy, I can tell you all went round and round with these people, but I think we finally got to where we need to be, so. I'll move that we're approved.
One second. So, they understand how much gravel they need and all that sort of stuff?
I don't know. Some days they do, some days they don't.
Did you talk for a buck? Did you talk for a buck?
I have not yet. Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye. I just didn't want you to forget, but.
I kinda wanted to forgive him, yeah. My problem with these is, we done something for them here probably a month ago, and they put in a driveway crossing, and, uh, to do that, they needed a little dirt to cover it up, so they just went out on the county road and dug the gravel up out of the road and fixed the driveways. So, we had some long issues and.
So, they created a speed bump for you, so you can slow down the traffic going through there?
Yeah, and a duck pond.
And while we're just sitting here signing stuff, I did want to publicly acknowledge that I appreciate you coming in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under what's normally been requested for your jail fund this year. Thank you for being frugal with our money.
Number twenty, consideration of possible action on the agenda items.
I'll get your, Ken's ready. Transfers from last fiscal year to this fiscal year.
Want to have this one covered?
No, we do not. I have to sign twice on what you're gonna.
Is this where we're signing here or up here?
You need to be signing up here.
Give me that back. He likes to sign with the excise board, fucking.
Yeah, I was just looking at it. On the, uh, free fares request, I did notice they sent a letter that explains their request, you know, they want you to, today.
Did you get that road paper from over there, Ron?
No. How's that, you got the roller up and down or?
It's actually, uh, the Volvo dealer down there getting, probably new wiring on this put on it. They'll fix this for, they're supposed to call me this afternoon, let me know when it's gonna be ready.
One of them's that and later they should be available, one ready.
Okay. You just tell her. But I'll let you know when the, the over be fixed. Or what the good doctors down there say about it anyway?
Are y'all just hanging around because you like these meetings or?
I guess so.
I didn't know if you had something on your gym or not.
No, just leaving.
More welcome. More welcome, not driving around with y'all. Kinda curious.
Just listening. I don't know that anymore.
It's good to see how the county runs.
Yeah.
Good job.
Yeah, but thanks to Chris, you can send it home in the jam, you just.
Put your bunny slippers on. But if it gets exciting and you don't hear all the back plan, that's important.
I just want to get stacked over here, so. Mike, you got it, run it out.
I'm getting your quit.
Oh, well, I'm not gonna let that happen. Transfer appropriation. Cash funds.
Cash funds.
Diamond stack.
And I might make a suggestion, because there's a hundred and fourteen blankets to sign, that if you all wanna do that, and then go ahead and finish up, and then step aside and sign them, the excise board can start at ten o'clock.
No, they wanna see how the candy, they don't have time.
Not like, been outmowed. Nice for Kevin Kenny now.
The rules don't say they have to be signed after meeting, it's actually approved, is it, right?
Right, right, I think we're good, as long as you all make the motion to approve, 'cause if you didn't, then I'm not sure how much shopping your districts would be doing, so.
That's almost like a bail threat there.
Wow.
No, it's a fact.
Pretty much. But I did realize that if you go ahead and make the motion approve them, and then just, we'll set you somewhere to sign them, then they can go ahead and get started.
Thirty-five cents, what am I signing? Evergreen Road. Thirty-five cents. That's a big one. Look how much the county paid to get that paper processed to that point. We'll just write through that thirty-five cents.
Yep.
We're gonna fix a lot of roads with the, with the brass side.
Require about a hundred-year accumulation.
So they're rolling, Sam.
These are all blankets, Sam?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Troy was nice enough to send us an email reminding us that today was the sign all papers day, so I did therapy on my hand all weekend to get prepared, sign this thing. Did she prepare you that, just wondering, she just looks out for all of the urges that?
Just y'all, yeah.
But that makes sense.
Twenty-one, any citizens are to be heard. Here and done. We don't have comments and that, since it's by the board, so.
You got any, you know.
Hey, it's alright. We have plenty to do today.
Let's do twenty-two, consideration of possible lives on adjournment.
So, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we're adjourned. Troy, I'll take them out and sign them.